Test, test.
Test. Can you hear me?
Let's see if it comes in.
Two.
I tested them all to go with Bryson here at work, so it's registering. Oh, there it is. It's working. Okay.
Okay.
Recording.
Call for the Holiday Island City Attorney Department of Public Mission. They should leave.
Mike.
March thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. All stand in front of the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Secretary, will you take attendance, please?
Commissioner Douglas is absent. Commissioner Coon?
Here.
Commissioner Hall?
Here.
Commissioner Lawler will be late. Commissioner Loda Wykes here. Commissioner Plumley?
Here.
Okay. We have a quorum.
Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
I'll second it.
Agenda's been approved.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. It didn't have been approved. Okay. On to business. The old business, adoption of the multi-form. Everybody have a copy of it?
Yes.
I've gone through it. It seems to be fairly easy, self-explanatory. Is there a reason why we can't combine the single filings with the multi-file? Does make one form, the multi-file be it? And whatever they don't use, just left blank?
That'd be a good question for Ben.
Yeah, yeah, I hear you. Repeat that again, I'm sorry.
Instead of having two separate forms, a single filed form and a multi-file form, can we not just combine and use the multi-file?
Right, that's-
And whatever's left blank, left blank?
Right.
That way it stops the confusion of maybe-
Which-
Downloading the wrong one or printing on the wrong one.
Yeah, it kind of eliminates a mistake.
I, I see someone doing it and I'll be the first one to admit it would be me?
It'd probably be me too. I get it.
But, uh-
No, I think that's probably wise. Just eliminate any confusion.
We'd have to put a disclaimer on the top stating this is for single and multiple.
Yeah, right. Yeah, for both.
So-
Yeah, I think that would eliminate some confusion or possible mistakes.
What do you think, Miss, Miss Barb?
I'm trying to figure out. This is my first look at this, so I'm trying to figure out exactly- So you're saying page one is single and the rest of them are multi-file?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that how it's doing it?
I believe so.
I don't have any problem combining them if you can.
I think, I think if we just put a disclaimer on the top there stating that this is for single and multiple.
And the single, no, they just have to do page one?
Yeah.
If we can be clear on that, I don't have a problem with that.
Okay. Any other questions on the?
No, yeah, I don't think so.
We need to get this passed so that we can get it out to-
Yep.
The short-term rentals.
Yeah, we've got people asking.
Yeah.
And a roll call, a motion roll call vote.
We get a motion, a roll call vote this?
I make a motion, roll call vote.
As amended?
Ben?
Yes, yes, I'm sorry.
Can I get a second?
I'll second. Okay, and then the roll call.
Roll call.
Okay. Commissioner Douglas is absent. Commissioner Coon?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner Lawler's late. Commissioner Loda Wykes, aye. And Commissioner Plumley?
Aye.
Okay, it passes.
All, all in favor?
That's it.
Okay. The adoption of the multi-form has passed with the amendments added to it. We will let Tabitha know to add a little disclaimer on there to cut down on possibilities of mistakes that this is for single and multiple. All right, on to the next one. How's the attorney?
Yeah.
Thing going?
Good. She got back in contact with us and sent over her agreement. And of course, we went over what her quote was gonna be. It's gonna be an hourly charge of two twenty-five. She does a reduced rate for municipalities and stuff, so it's, you know, pretty fair deal, I think. So she did send over the agreement, which you got a copy of there. I make a motion that we accept it and get an agreement going with her so we can get her started on these platforms, getting the tax implemented.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Roll call vote.
Roll call vote.
Okay. Commissioner Douglas absent. Commissioner Coon?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner Lawler's late. Commissioner Loda Wykes, aye. Commissioner Plumley?
Aye.
Passes.
All righty.
And I have a letter already out to her telling her if this was approved, also giving her a list of all of the platforms, suggesting she do that first, and then a list of all the questions from the subcommittee relating to the chamber and the- So if there's, and, and I think I sent it out to the commissioners. If there's any other-
Yeah.
Thing you want me to add, if you could let me know right away, then I'll get it off to her today.
Yeah.
I didn't, I didn't have any additions.
Okay, good.
Neither.
Okay, good. Okay, do you want to sign that? Blue. Thank you.
Don't know what color that is. Oh, black.
Okay, thank you. Perfect.
All right. Web designer, Ben again.
Yeah, so we've got the two quotes that we, you know, gathered a few weeks ago to get started. And so there's been a little bit of back and forth on what the AMP can promote and not promote. And so that's kind of taken a, a different turn as far as what kind of website we need. And it's gonna be a pretty simple website, you know, looking over at Eureka Springs CAPC site. It's very basic, just informational kind of thing. The visit eureka springs dot com is the one where they're promoting all the businesses and short-term rentals and that sort of thing. So for purposes of just having a site for the AMP, I, you know, it's just gonna be a pretty simple site. And I think between these two bids, we have these two different companies. Either if we had to add to it or whatever, both of them would be able to handle it. Obviously, and leaning towards the cheaper of the two, four thousand dollars for a simple site is, is, is up there a little bit, I think. The twenty-five hundred dollar quote is probably more in line with it. Both, both of them, we could add to if we want, that sort of thing. The, the other issue was the domain name. If we're gonna have a simple, separate site, the visit holidayisland.com, you know, if we're gonna kind of mirror what Eureka Springs is doing, so to speak, we'd actually have to come up with another domain because we'd have two sites, you know. So I don't think we should use the visit holidayisland.com domain for the simple AMP site. So we'll have to come up with another, and it was basically the acronym for the AMP here and see if that's available.
Okay, and there's no way that eventually we could combine the two websites?
Well, I don't-
Depending on what we are-
That's a question, actually.
The purposes seem to be different. The simple website is basically all the legal forms and, and all the information of the city meetings and stuff. And the visit would be really what the tourists are looking at.
Okay.
And this will kind of actually go along with some of the questions for the attorney, you know, because we're getting conflicting information. I mean, we're asking other municipalities, what, what did you guys do? And then we're finding out, oh, this other municipality said, no, don't do it. So we're like, who's, who's got the real answer here? So part of that is kind of figuring that out. And I thought, you know, maybe we could just have one site and that sort of thing. But there's some promotional deal, businesses you can't do as an AMP, which is, I think, strange. But, yeah, so there's certain rules we gotta go by. And it's kind of like, oh, last time we were talking, you know, attorney-wise, three years from now, if we're doing stuff right, correctly, the first time, we won't find ourselves in trouble-
Correct.
Like we're seeing some other ones. And they kind of just went off and started doing stuff without, you know, really knowing what the rules were.
Yeah, the Arkansas code isn't real specific.
Mm-hmm. Right. So if we have legal representation, it's like, go talk to the attorney. She told us to, you know, that sort of thing. So anyway, as far as the site goes, I make a motion that we accept the twenty-five hundred dollar bid. But, you know, we'll have to come up with a domain. It'll be, you know, probably available, hopefully, whatever we choose, and probably not very expensive for the domain. You know, it's not gonna be anything crazy. But as far as the two bids go, that's really all, all I have to really mention. Yeah, two, two different sites and, and do the simple one. We get that one out of the way and then move towards creating the site for the visit holidayisland.com for the visitor center, you know, type deal. Yep. So I think that's the line we're trying to take.
I'll second the motion.
Okay.
I've got some questions first.
Okay, sure.
From a Lily Copy Company. It says on page two here, the crossbones are testing. I notice they have the major ones, Chrome, Firefox, Safari, and probably, what's Microsoft's? Edge?
Yeah.
One about like DuckDuckGo and all that.
I'm not sure. I'll have to ask.
Because some people use DuckDuckGo because it kind of doesn't do the tracking with it.
Oh, I see. I'll have to ask her. Yeah, I wouldn't. I don't know.
I don't see why I wouldn't because-
I don't either. It's probably just not-
Pretty close to the rest of them. It just doesn't do the tracking.
Right, and there, she's just not listing it. But I'm with you. I think that's probably the case, but I can confirm it.
Okay.
Yep.
We had a motion. Did we have a second?
I did. I seconded it.
Okay. Do a roll call vote, Mr. Secretary.
Okay. Commissioner Douglas absent. Commissioner Coon?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner Lawler's late. Commissioner Loda Wykes, aye. Commissioner Plumley?
Aye.
Aye. It passes. Good job.
And I'll get an agreement, wind up the things.
All right. The leased office redrawn, withdrawn, this part.
Yes. Because of the reduced recog- income expectation, I got it out of the lease space lease, so that Tabby continued to work at home as a virtual office. And then we'll just store the information in the chamber, Locks Chamber Room. So we save two hundred dollars a month between now and June and then two fifty for the rest of the year. So just reporting that information.
And approval of paying the net dues.
Right. Northwest Arkansas Tourists Association, this, we have been a member, the city or high city have been a member for years. There was a November twenty twenty-four invoice that had never been paid. We finally got a new copy for the AMP, so that's two thousand five hundred dollars. It sounds like a lot of money, but it's an amazing amount of statistics and help information. And Holiday Island, Siloam Springs, and Green Forest are their targeted markets because it's been so underutilized. So I, I would recommend that we pay this invoice.
You need a motion?
I made a motion to pay the invoice.
I'll second.
Okay.
Do a roll call vote.
Commissioner Douglas absent. Commissioner Coon?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner Lawler's late. Commissioner Loda Wykes, aye. Commissioner Plumley?
Aye.
Thank you very much. I'll get that taken care of. Initiate there. Sign that, please.
All righty. Hello, Miss, Miss Lawler?
Hello.
Good morning.
There's no new business? Any commissioner comments?
We are here.
You counted that one just right. No commissioner comments?
None.
Any public comments?
You're the public.
Any online comments?
No, I don't believe we have. We got one watching, but I think it's me. It's myself watching, yeah. Nope, no comments online.
All right. Scheduling, next regular meeting's April seventh at six here?
Yes.
At the city hall?
At some point, I'm thinking of maybe asking for a workshop. For, Mark and I are totally new to this and don't understand anything you've done yet.
We've got a workshop coming up just to help fill out the forms, help everybody kind of do the forms, but we can add that.
Just as a-
Time to get y'all caught up with us.
As a discussion on, you know, what we're doing, why we're doing it, what are our goals, that kind of thing, just, just to bring us up to speed.
We can add that to the workshop.
I think that would be good because we kind of are restructuring what our goals are based on the legalities we're finding out about. So, yeah, I think it's probably time to set, like, an outline of what we're, I think, that's good.
That would be great.
Should we set the workshop after we get a response from the attorney?
Yes.
After we get the questions answered?
Yeah, I think that'd be wise. Yeah, yeah, we may come up with some questions between now and then too, so. No, that'd be good. That, that way we're all on the same page. Yeah.
And I do have a book that has all of the minutes as well as all of the ordinances and the resolutions that you're welcome to borrow.
Is that on a website somewhere or no?
Right now, it's a hard copy.
That wouldn't hurt for me to go through.
Yeah, that would be good to give you copies of the minutes of the meetings and if you just had to read them.
Yeah, that, got it freshened, yeah, for sure.
And then when the website gets filled, we'll just-
Oh, yeah, it'll be more readily available, yeah.
Good. Okay, okay.
Any announcements?
I just want to remind the public that we do have an open spot on the Holiday Island Advertising and Promotion Commission in, has to be living in Carroll County and related to the tourist. Our next meeting in April seventh, we will interview the candidates and the board will have the opportunity to appoint someone subject to the city's confirmation.
Any more announcements? Got a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.
It's adjourned. Thank you.
Fifteen-minute meet. Fifteen-minute meet.